You're trying to make a time.
Good morning. And now we're going to call the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to Order. I'm going to read the Executive Order on Remote Participation. On Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy Signed into Law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an Act Making Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to remain to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General, Chapter 38, Section 20. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. Thank you. Do all pause for a moment and stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic of America.
And to the Constitution.
Under the Constitution. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Morning, everyone. Holiday week. We'll be celebrating, speaking of the flag, we'll be celebrating the Fourth of July this week. I'll call a roll. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
I don't see Commissioner Stady, but we do expect him. And Chairman Shea is here. We do have a we do have a quorum, so we'll go right with the, right along with the agenda. I think we're, our plan, should we skip over a couple, the executive session until Richard is here?
That'd be great.
Okay. Number four minutes, the open session meeting of June 26th, 2024, for your approval.
I say we hold those till Richard gets on because he might have a comment.
Okay.
I'm just letting him know.
We have none.
Oh wait, Richard's coming on now.
I see him. We're all set. I don't see him. I see his name. Richard, can you hear us? Richard. I can't see him. His name is up here though that he's on. I know.
I'll just keep going, Joe.
Okay, we're on item number five of the public would like to come in and address the commissioners they can. This is the time to do it. Or if anyone in remote land that would like to address us, this is the time. Director Cronin, you haven't had anyone inquire about a public comment for today's meeting?
Uh, very briefly, Commissioner, um, I wanted to pass along some kind words the county received from the trial courts this morning. As you probably know, the large case that had been held right up the street for the last couple of months concluded yesterday. Um, the trial court security personnel wanted to extend their deepest appreciations to the commissioners and the maintenance staff, especially for all of their assistance, um, handling the large crowds and the demands, uh, for services. It was, um, very much appreciated by the trial courts and as the message ended, we're probably going to do it again. So, um, through, uh, through you, I just wanted to let you know.
It's always good to get good news.
Yeah.
Sure, there'll be more to follow on, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
Okay, last call for public comment. Number seven, all business, I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration, we have fair amount today. Commissioner Collins, if you would, to be honest.
Um, I'm going to ask, um, I'm going to ask, ask the, uh, the county director to read those because I don't have access to them. I saw them. They were fine, but I don't have access to them right now.
Would you like me to read them, Joe?
Bill, Bill Buckley, do you have them in front of you?
Sure, Commissioner. There's going to be one. Three, Mr. Chair, uh, we have a notice of leave of absence effective 8/2624 to 8/2225. Name and department redacted in accordance with Health Insurance, uh, Portability and Accountability Act of 1996 guidelines for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Second, it knows mission made and seconded all favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, agricultural school.
Three, Mr. Chair, uh, we have noticed some contingent appointment for Gavin M. Horn of Boston, Massachusetts as a student worker for the rate, uh, as um, presented effective, uh, July the 8th, 2024. We have a notice of appointment of a new position for Stephen B. Maher of Walpole, Mass. as School Finance Grants Associated, uh, for the rate as, uh, written effective July the 8th, 2024. Notice of resignation of Tracy A. Ward of Milford, Massachusetts, as administrative assistant to the principal, uh, for the rate stated effective, uh, July the 20th, so 12th, 2024. And notice of retirement for Alice K. Chino of Quincy, Mass. as Principal Payroll Clerk submissions analyst for the rate stated effective August the 2nd, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. One, two, three, four. On the, on the, on the various Norfolk ad matters, we have a motion.
I, I made the motion.
I'll second it all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Approved. On the Commissioner's office, one more, Bill.
Three, Mr. Chair, uh, notice of retirement of longstanding County Procure, Chief Procurement Officer Nancy R. Rockwell of Walpole, Mass. Effective July the 31st, 2024.
I'll, I'll make the motion, but it's a sad motion. We all love Nancy, so, um, I will make the motion.
Motion made and seconded all in favor. I will have more to say about Nancy further on in the month.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stady is here. Uh, sorry, I had technical issues, but I'm dialed in.
All right. We're going to we have a full board. Chairman Stady is present, I mean, Commissioner Stady is present. If there's no objection, we're going to go back to item number three, which is executive session.
Oh, okay.
And then we can continue the rest of our agenda after the executive session.
Yep. My, my partner had the computer and I'm going to blame her, I'm far off, but I had to dial in, sorry about the
I need a motion.
I move we go executive session. We're still in the master. One, a three, discuss strategy, respect, collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares.
On the executive session, real call vote. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Chairman Shea votes yes. I will state that we will be returning after the executive session to complete our agenda. We are an executive session. Thank you very much.
You need to declare it, so.
And I do declare that we, uh, need litigation, that we need to discuss litigation today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back on the record on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. For the weekly meeting of the Norfolk County Commission. Tension, Commissioner, this is item number nine is the next item on the agenda. It is payroll and expense warrants. Who in front of them?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the warrant for, uh, a proposed motion?
Director Cronin, read the warrant.
That is great.
Warrant list for July 2nd, 2024. The first is a payroll warrant for the county, $154,192.42. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go through each one or, uh, do you want to take one motion for all of them?
No, I've got it. I've got it. He just said it to me. I can do it.
We do each one. We vote on each.
I can, actually, John, I can do it.
I'm the first motion, the county payroll.
2052, payroll county, move the motion, 154, 192, 42 cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is a vote.
Second. I move, uh, warrant 7124, Walston Recreation Credit Card Payment, you know, $50,832, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the credit card payment to Walston Recreation Facility. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is a vote. Number three.
125. That can't be right. Can it? 7125? Expense of the county?
Yes.
Should we? Is that correct? 7125?
Uh, 24.
Yeah, okay, that's right. I said 25. So move 7124, expense of the county, the sum $523,920, 38 cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the county expense. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The remaining are ARPA, folks.
Okay, the following are all ARPA awards. They're all 25 dash one. I'm going to make it one motion. ARPA, these are the following counts in this order. Rhythm, $60,834.94, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on ARPA Rhythm. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is a vote. Next.
Second, ARPA award to Waymouth. $116,405. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on ARPA Waymouth. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Through it, ARPA award to Norwood, the sum of $200,000, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on ARPA Norwood. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The fourth ARPA award is to Denham, town of Denham, for $513,428, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Denham, Denham ARPA. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Next, ARPA is to the town of Canton. Need some help today. $550,000, no, $555,500, $360.58, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Canton ARPA. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. In the last two at the Waymouth, the first and the last two is the Waymouth, $62,373.82, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on Waymouth ARPA. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Final one against the Waymouth, this is the sum of $1,038,392.29, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the third Waymouth ARPA. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. That concludes the warrant list, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, uh, point and order.
Go ahead. Director Cronin.
Few moments ago, Commissioner Stady questioned the third warrant item on the, uh, list. Um, the effective date is in fact July 1st, 2025. Copy of the warrant reads Norfolk County is hereby authorized to draw warrants against Norfolk County funds for the sum of $523, $523,920.38 on account of obligations incurred for value received in services and materials as shown for the period July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. So respectfully, I would ask that the item previously approved, that is the expense of the county of totaling $523,920.38 be amended to be July 1st, 2025.
Do you understand that, Commissioner? The three on the warrant list today, we thought was a typo. It is not. It's unique because it's the end of the season. That's why it says 25, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll stick there as a friendly motion. All right.
Okay. Number 10, Report the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Sorry, Commissioner Shea, I didn't hear a vote on that.
Again, council commissioners. Back to item number three was dated 7125.
Okay, I'll just amend it. I'll make, I'll amend item three to 7125.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Number 10. Report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, this afternoon, uh, the commissioners approved a host, I believe totaling seven different ARPA awards. Um, the total 2.546 million dollars. You will now well over $121 million awarded in this grant. Um, the first grant award for the town of Norwood, um, is effectively an advance, uh, for public health response, uh, to fund the benefits for outreach services, public health nurses and other such benefits associated with their, uh, efforts to combat, um, COVID-19 response in Norwood. The second item for the town of Denham, $513,428. Was also an advance for an HVAC project. Um, this particular project is for the Public Works Engineering Offices, uh, where staff members are confined to a very small space. Um, as an eligible category for expenses, this particular item will renovate that item, or that area rather, for the addition of, uh, BRF simultaneous heating and cooling systems, uh, and remove, uh, circulating DX hot water heating indoor air handling systems. This will improve the air quality within the space that these individuals, uh, occupy. The third item, the town of Waymouth, which was a very large one, excuse me, of $1,058, I'm sorry, $38,39. Is a hybrid grant on, under infrastructure. This will, uh, provide for the installation of a temporary bypass, cutting and reconnection of pressure sewer inside manholes and other related tasks on NECK Street. That's N-E-C-K. Town of Waymouth also, um, was awarded $116,400 for an item that is a reimbursable expense for the tight Mill Creek Sewer Design and Permitting Cost, um, engineering services associated with the design and permitting of the Lower Central Interceptor Sewer Project. Waymouth's third grant was $62,373.82. This particular item was also a reimbursement. It is an MWRA entrance application. Uh, entry, engineering services are related to the application for the entrance into the MWRA regional water supply to meet Waymouth's future water needs projected for the next 20 years. Excuse me, the town of Rhythm's grant of $60,834.94 was to support an advance for stormwater improvements, um, in the vicinity of Arnold Street. Uh, this will include borrowings, base, prepare the base plan, design, notice of intent, construction estimates and other activity associated with this particular, uh, stormwater improvement project. And finally, the town of Canton, $550,360.58. This is an advance for premium pay associated with, um, Canton Municipal and School Employees, um, who provided services during the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, I believe that item concludes Canton's activity within the portal. Uh, I can double check on that, but at this time, that concludes the presentation of the grants today. If you would like, Mr. Chairman, I can give you a brief update on where we stand with the ARPA plan overall.
Sure, please do.
Very briefly, um, as the commissioners know, the county is actively involved in closing out grant planning for, uh, each of the communities. As of yesterday, I had approved 11 closeout plans. Uh, Quincy was the one I did yesterday, Joe. Um, overall, the planning is going according to our hopes that most communities are using their allotted funds or plan to do so. Um, we have to date received five additional above allocation applications in the portal. Communities were asked to put those items in there in the event that any additional funding becomes available between now and the end of December. We can evaluate through the commissioner's approval, shifting funds to obligate uh, those resources so as not to revert them to the federal treasury. Um, my hope is that by the end of this month, we will conclude our closeout planning with the remaining communities. Um, one item, I'm kind of teasing a little bit, but in my communication, um, with the town, county town managers, I'll let them know that effectively there were no real dollars to be redistributed to the remaining communities in Norfolk County. The only expectation of surplus will come from communities that for some reason or another are not able to fulfill their obligation plan that they've explained to us. And I don't expect that to be a ton of money, to be honest with you. Um, and that will be made known to them in mid-July when we meet with the, um, county managers. So that is all I have today for the ARPA update.
Any questions of Director Cronin relative to ARPA related stuff?
Nice job, Joe.
Commissioner Stady.
Mr. Chairman, through you. So I, I mentioned Canton. Through you. Are there any other towns closed down today? Is Waymouth the Rhythm guy?
I believe Went, uh, Waymouth is. I think they are. I left my tracking sheet in my office. I don't know it off the top of my head. Many of the communities, I think we're down to about five communities, Commissioner Stady, that have, uh, not yet arrived or have come close to closing out their obligation. So that means many or close to over 20 have. I believe Canton and Waymouth are in that grouping.
Yeah, we mentioned, uh, I guess this is more for Bill Buckley and of course to the chair. But, uh, we mentioned as towns wrap up, maybe we do some kind of a closing ceremony or, I don't know, something. Just to kind, we've kind of lost track of giving these awards to the people and that's kind of, you can just have them on our meeting. It's kind of surprising that we don't have more people at our meeting with giving out these gifts because I think it's an important thing.
I don't know if you're going to get people to come, uh, to a larger meeting like that. I mean, maybe we could have a, a meeting with the advisory board with each of the representatives from the town. That might be the cleanest way to do it.
Hmm.
No, I meant even on Zoom. I'm disappointed that these administrators don't even like jumping on a Zoom call. We used to have a lot more participation, you know, when there was an award given and we gave out like six awards today and there's nobody here. I'm just kind of, oh, just a little surprised. I'm surprised. That's all. Anyway. That's my comment.
Okay. Going to move on to number 11. ARPA warrants for approval. We approve them under number nine. So not necessary to do it again. Number 12, bid openings, we have none. Number 13, contractor wars, we have none. Number 14, fiscal year 22, annual audits for acceptance. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Um, this afternoon, it's my pleasure to provide the commissioners with, um, the final FY22 audit. Um, as you may know, last year, we began a relationship with Powers and Sullivan, which later consolidated with Markham this past spring. The firm has been busy, um, tackling both the FY22 audit as well as the FY23 audit. This FY22 audit, um, comes to you with, um, little or no, uh, recommendations for, um, related to material weaknesses other than, uh, one out of the treasurer's office. Uh, it's associated with something called the due to and due from accounts. Um, the second recommendation is reconciliation of withholding account, uh, with respect to, uh, the county's payroll withholding, uh, liability accounts. These two items fall under the treasurer's office. Yesterday morning, um, I met with the county treasurer, Mike Bellotti, um, the first assistant treasurer, Joe Diaria, and we went through these items. Um, Joe explained that the due to, due from cycle, um, and acknowledged ought to have a chronic zero sum balance. The tool of using this approach to accounting is something that, um, can be addressed through the recommendation of Powers and Sullivan shown on page two of the financial statement. Um, and the treasurer indicated that he will task his staff with developing a written policy to ensure that this recommendation is seen through. Regarding the reconciliation of withholding accounts, um, there is currently some internal reviews of how the cash moves for, um, these, uh, funds associated with payroll withholding specifically to healthcare benefits accounts. I expect that review to be completed in the next month or so. Um, but overall, the material weaknesses are minimal. Uh, this is a far cry from the, uh, types of, um, audits the county has endured in the last several years. I think it reflects the progress the commissioners have made to tighten up our administration and our overall continued, uh, adherence to internal controls. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have on 22, but before I turn it over to you, Commissioner Shea, I want to let you know that I'm expecting that the FY23 audit will be completed in the next couple of months. And we will have been caught up with our obligation to provide these audits to our, uh, financial advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a comment, but I'll wait till after. Commissioners, any comment on the audit?
I'm all set.
Well, I mean, I'm not prepared to vote anything today. I just got it. I need time to work it.
Correct. That's, that's my point. I want to, I want, I want to carry this on the agenda till the next meeting and, 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 you know, see, see the, see the actual report. Now, in the past, some of our auditors have been and explained at the end of the year, um, I don't want to take any unnecessary time, but it might, it might be a good idea to have Powers and Sullivan in.
I will extend the invitation. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we do that? And then
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to read it before I vote on it. I know. Okay, well, we'll have please send copies to the three of us.
Uh, copies were distributed via email.
Okay.
If it's possible, get a hard copy.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else on the annual audit, which is going to remain on the calendar? At least one more meeting. But I'm good to hear the first, uh, reports on it are positive and that's good. Number 15, report the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. Um, the FY25 close continues. Um, we are tracking, as I mentioned last week, a modest surplus. This particular item will be fortified in the next week or so when the treasurer receives the final revenues associated with FY24. Um, as I mentioned, I'm hoping, um, to make a recommendation to you as early as July 17th on a cessation of the current spending and hiring freeze. Um, a reminder that, uh, to the county commissioners, myself and the assistant county director will be attending the county managers' meeting on July 17th. In fact, we are hosting it. Um, it'll be held in Randolph and the county commissioners, excuse me, the county managers will be hearing from us on our activities associated with ARPA and the, uh, regional services changes that we've made to the county. And as always, listening, um, intently to what the managers have to say about the services that we provide and any interest that they have may have in, uh, future services that they may need. We'll report back to the commissioners on that meeting once it is concluded. I want to thank, uh, extend my thanks again. I mentioned earlier in the, uh, meeting that our maintenance department went, went well above and beyond, um, maintaining the registry building, our trial court, specifically our Superior Court during the last two months of this large scale, um, event that concluded yesterday. Um, they did great work under circumstances that involve, um, literally hundreds of people coming and going from our buildings every day, uh, without any problems. Um, tomorrow, myself, the assistant county director and the chief information officer will be visiting the Walston recreational facility. We'll be meeting with uh, Carl and Dana to go over a host of issues, including, uh, their website and, uh, possible, uh, new policies associated with their business. Uh, this has been something I've asked Carl to work on for the last three months, so we're anxiously waiting some recommendations from the superintendent on some changes that they can make to improve their business model. The Commissioners may know that we currently have three administrative vacancies that we're tracking. Waits and Measures, which is a new hire approved in the F Y twenty five budget. The Chief Procurement Officer and Assistant Supervisor of Facilities. Um, we have opened up the uh, the posting for all three positions and have begun receiving resumes. We will begin interviews uh with these positions on Friday and continue into next week for the uh various candidates. And I will hopefully have some recommendations for new hires over the next couple of weeks. Uh, transitional planning is uh going on, ongoing, I should say, with the Chief Procurement Officer and her staff. As well as the Assistant Supervisor of Maintenance to ensure that once they have uh departed, we have sufficient resources in place to continue the services. Without interruption. Uh, and finally, Bill, I'll give you the cue now to pull up the picture. After uh many months, if not years, the golf course has successfully installed the sign. That replaces the sign that was removed on the Granite Street side of the golf course. Um, big thanks to Carl and his staff to getting this uh particular image, or excuse me, sign completed. As well as Nancy Rockwell and Patrick Higgins, who did yeoman work in uh Mass Highway and local authorities to approve the installation of this new sign. Which is now on our property, inside the fence and presents a very professional image of uh the President's Golf Course Services. To motorists and pedestrians traveling that route. Um, this particular sign, as I mentioned, replaces one that was on the uh public side of that fence on state property that had fallen and been removed years ago. Uh, the sign looks great and we want to thank uh folks associated with that project uh once again. That is all I have. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
The, the sign looks great. It really does. Mister Chairman, I understand too that. Uh, Patrick had a little bit of effort involved with that as well in making that happen. We want to give a shout out to him and a thank you to his work, engineers.
Great. Okay. Johnny, you through with your foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could make a point of order for you, I think prior to Commissioner Stady logging in. You hit deferred action on item number four on today's agenda, which was the approval of meeting minutes for June twenty sixth.
That's correct. My notes say the same thing. I almost forgot about it. Your attention is drawn back to page one, item number four. Minutes of the open session meeting of June twenty sixth for our approval.
I will approve.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the minutes of the open session meeting of June twenty six, twenty twenty four. All in favor? Aye. They are approved. I'm sorry, I can't. Who's talking?
Mr. Shay, if I could ask one, one other item relative to upcoming events and schedules, please?
Yes.
Um, July seventeenth is uh the County Managers' Meeting. That is a Wednesday. The meeting starts at eleven A M. Uh, would you mind if we considered a later start for that week or you could evaluate moving the date altogether? This is July seventeenth, Wednesday.
I cannot do that, Mister Chairman. I have a commitment already in the afternoon. I'm trying to hustle to get to. Yeah, I gotta keep, I'm hoping the meeting will be earlier, uh, later.
Okay. Well. I, I want, I want to ensure that the three Commissioners are here, so we probably won't be able to accommodate, but maybe. Moving forward wouldn't help at all, right?
Not really, not on that day, no. Unless it's early in the morning.
Okay, I think we should leave it at two o'clock and we'll work around it. That's all we can do.
Two o'clock on the seventeenth? We normally meet at one o'clock.
I'm sorry, one o'clock. I'm sorry, one o'clock. I don't want to change the date on the seventeenth. Thank you.
Oh, no, please.
And that's two weeks from this week.
Very well. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. I'm good.
I mean, unless, unless the thought would be, how about John and Bill, if the agenda is light? And you think it's gonna be a light day. We have sometimes do that. Um. But it's just, it's one of those things. I know it's a crowded day for me, myself. A lot, a lot of things are jammed in and I have, I have something I want to get to at three o'clock. In the afternoon that day.
Well, we'll take a look at it next week, but I, I'm not of a, a mind to change it right now. I think, you know, our attendance is more important. You know, we're pretty, we're pretty flexible.
Okay.
Today being a perfect example, but, you know, I think we'll stay at one P M on the seventeenth.
Did we firm up the multi-county meeting with the other uh Commissioners?
Uh, I have a uh confirmation that the tie, that the date works for Plymouth County. There was a conflict with half of the Bristol contingent, and so I've asked Commissioner Mitchell to. Offer up an alternative date, perhaps in August if he feels compelled to attend, and I have not heard from Barnstable, so. Um, don't have a full confirmation, but it's, it's getting there.
Okay.
Okay. Number sixteen, any other topics that the. Chair, the not reasonably anticipated will be discussed. I was deciding. I'm sorry, who's that? Is that Richard? I can't hear it.
Not me. I'm all set.
Okay. Okay, you're all set. John's all set. Richard's all set. Okay.
Commissioner Shay, today's meeting, respectfully, I would ask you again to recess the meeting. Allow for any last minute uh corrections to be made as we approach the F Y twenty four closure.
I like that motion.
Okay, second.
Motion made and seconded to recess the meeting based on last minute financial matters. I can't. Is there someone commenting on this?
No, that's your dialogue box coming in, Joe. That's all it is.
Okay, we gotta take a look at this system. It's driving me crazy. Okay. All in favor of the motion to recess today's meeting? Someone's trying to speak to us and I can't tell who it is.
I'm in favor of that motion.
I think the person trying to talk, Joe, is, is just feedback, so whatever you say, cut me double back, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry. Alright. Motion made and seconded to recess this meeting. For purposes of last minute financial matter.
Maybe we'll do a roll call now.
Okay. Do we understand the motion and the recess would be till Wednesday, July tenth?
Right, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. On the motion. All in favor?
Uh, roll call?
Roll call, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, alright.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Shay. Is the yes, this meeting is recessed till Wednesday, July tenth. Two thousand twenty four.
Happy Fourth, everybody.
Thank you very much. Everyone have a nice Fourth of July. Thank you.